All right, the time is now 7:00 P.M. This is a Cape Towning Road open space informational meeting. We're talking about the town being able to process and bring passive recreation users onto the property. And we are talking about the information for tonight in the review of a slideshow. And we're asking for public input. So if you wouldn't mind, we'll start right off with on to your side of the building. You also have some information over here as well showing where the land is, delineation of the markings. And you have a little slideshow to go forward. I've been working tonight with our recreation director. This is Mark Simmons. And you have pass out paperwork in the back if you wanted to follow along. So let's see. So again, what we're putting forth is actually ideas. We're looking for your ideas as well, looking for things we can do for passive recreation for the future. Just a little background before we go into all of this, you'll note that there are parcels that are listed on that picture on the far left. Three parcels that were put together in 2005, the state of Connecticut had deeded to the town in Plainfield 139 acres of passive recreation. Passive recreation has certain definitions, but mostly you have to understand that it is not for motorized vehicles and it's not for hunting. So that's why we're trying to come up with some ideas of what we could use for public input to put together different ideas on that property. What we can also say that we were fortunate enough to find that there was a piece of property that was for sale that was very close to the 139 acres. And that was when our maintenance person, Ron Roberts, came forward and said, hey, I found that this is for sale. So from there, Ron brought it to Kyle, and Kyle brought it forth to myself, and myself and Mary Ann thought it would be a good idea, we should put a bid in for both properties. The first one being right off the road of Cape Towning was a purchase, and we agreed on purchase price. And then the second one, we went to see the Patel family over as part of the highway campers. We asked for about a quarter of an acre of land just so we could continue on back to that property. And they were very generous because they said to us, well, how about if you take 18.57 acres instead? And so we negotiated a price for that. So the total cost was $103,000. For those people who want to go back to the history, there was about $420,000 earmarked and dedicated in an account for open space. So we utilized those monies to purchase that property. So going forward, we wanted to be able to put something together to say, this is an idea or multiple ideas to see what would work harmoniously for the property. So I want to go through, you also have the handouts that follow along with this. An overhead shot of this, I apologize, we tried to get a video, but didn't make it in time. But the overhead shot is, you'll see in the far left of that picture is the highway camper area. And then it continues down along the, that's the Cape Towning Road or the Bottom Road, obviously the highway with the power lines going alongside. The purchase prices and purchase areas, almost 162 acres would be starting to the left of where that power line is going back, nothing but woods. Gives you the scope of how large this property really is, but again, it is marked out in that markings over the picture on the left over there if you want to take a closer look. And that's how we started off. We started off finding out that the property was for sale and we looked to go from there. What ideas could we put there? We asked a few people if they would by coming up with some ideas at the last public input meeting. There was a list of everything from disc golf course to dog park to bike trails to ice skating, small bird pond to summer splash pad, water fountain, sand volleyball court, horseshoe pits, picnic tables, sports style swings, jungle gym, rocks for kids, rock ball for kids, skate park, public restroom, zip line, fishing, athletic fields, outdoor educational opportunities, farmer's market, and native pollinator gardens. You will see some of those examples here. We didn't put them all here, and there's a reason why. We thought that it was, it would be too much use in that small area. You think 162 acres is a lot, but you also have to have an area for parking. And you have to be able to put a lot of different things and ideas together in order to make things harmonious. Some of the ideas, and by the way, thank you, Jen, for that, for your pictures, and we asked some others as well. But these are some ideas from other places. I did speak out to, it was, sorry, Lisbon?
Lisbon.
Meadows?
Yes.
Lisbon Meadows. Tom Sparkin is the first elector of Lisbon Meadows, and I asked Tom how he put his together. You'll see some of the pictures from Lisbon Meadows in here as well. Mr. Sparkin stated that it is not dedicated as passive recreation, open space. So that's why they have kind of a mishmash put together. And you'll see some of the pictures out later on, but basically, he said if you had to do it all over again, he would rethink it because one of the walking trails comes out by the soccer field. You have to walk around the soccer field to get back into the walking trail. So that's lessons to learn. But anyways, we can go through some of these, get some ideas. What was the name of the park in Maine that this came from?
It's called Pond Cherry Trail. It's emerged in Maine, and it is also part of the Lakes Association. So there's two from Walmart that look together that is free to the public.
Excellent. So we'll go through a couple of the pictures, just to get ideas. That's the concept here, good ideas, and we'd like to have your input afterwards. So some very nice walking trails, different types of access, a bridge. And again, this fits in with the nature of the area, different ways you get over a wall. Some of the things for activities we could consider doing is something like that with a rope. What do they call that?
Low rope course.
Low rope course?
Course.
Course, sorry. Things that are very passive, but do have some exercise value to it. And another thing I thought was very interesting about this, because I think there are a few others as well, is the fact that you can have some educational opportunities here for, you know, teaching everybody, really, not just the children, but everybody, different ideas of what goes on in the trail. How does a forest keep our water clean? And there are many ideas like this at different parks, this is a very interesting one. This I thought was a very good one because it gives an opportunity for people who like the park to be able to donate back into it, so it helps it possibly somewhat sustain as it goes through. But there are places there for donations, for educational items. And again, this is the welcoming to the trail itself. And different forms of able to maneuver onto through the park.
I wanted to mention, because the land parcel that is, you know, just up in here, does have wetland, this is how they safely manage through their wetland area of this park. So these are like raised walkways to respectfully navigate through the wetland area.
Would these be considered ADA compliant?
Well, it has a ramp, so unfortunately, it is probably not wide enough for a wheelchair.
So that would be something for the future to design?
Yep, but I think, you know, it is always wise to consider ADA compliant because we certainly want people to live in wheelchairs or strollers or anything they might be pushing to be able to access the space.
And back to the education of the, you know, what is surrounding the area, the rocks, the formations, how they were made. And then we go on to some more ideas for recreation. So if you want to add a few more ideas in?
Sure. So, you know, kind of what Kevin has talked about already is that mainly we want to keep this, you know, really forest setting, natural setting. We don't want to alter what is there currently. So whatever we add, we want it to look aesthetically pleasing. We want to really keep it the least impact as possible. But obviously, we want to attract the younger generations, the families, and make it interactive and educational. So there is a company, Ferris Playgrounds. I think you might be a little familiar with them.
These are Ferris.
So what they do is they specialize in making all-natural playgrounds or playscapes and kind of standalone independent play units. So we kind of just took a couple of pictures from their catalog. We certainly don't have to work with this specific company. We can simply use this for ideas. But as you can see, in the upper right-hand corner, there's a relatively small 12-by-12 pavilion, you know, that's really geared towards, you know, younger kids, just kind of using it as like a playhouse or, you know, just a gathering space. It's not meant for a large family party or a birthday party. It's really geared towards the younger kids as a space for them. And then, you know, there's certain other aspects such as, you know, this slide that is, it's probably five feet in height, but it's built into an already existing hill. So again, pretty, you know, minimal in impact, but yet it adds another element to this, you know, property that will make it more open, make it inclusive to, you know, people of all ages. So that's pretty much it for this.
And I just want to mention that the idea is if it was something that would be considered by, we're looking for volunteers for a group, but it would be something that if they considered it, it would be something where you put it in the middle of the trail, it would be something outside.
Exactly.
But just to reiterate the fact that we have 139 acres of passive recreation, when we purchased the other items, it could be four acres for the parking lot area and the 18.57. The question really came into me, what is it going to be for the 18.57? The previous property owners asked if it would be somewhat of a passive recreation. They don't want a, you know, ball field and things like that there. But this might be something they might consider because it would be something of, again, if you look back at the, even the slide, the way it was built into, into the hillside and a walk-up, it's something that is very outstanding as a playground would be normally. So it would be part of the, you know, same park kind of built in.
So again, these are just a few more standalone or what's called independent play objects. I do apologize, the picture's a little blurry. But, you know, this is a balance beam made out of a cedar log. And this is another version of a balance beam. Then you just have these, you know, three or four-foot climbers where a kid can simply climb up one side and climb down the other side. These are called mushroom hoppers, or these are like treetop hoppers. They're just, you know, logs that are shaped and, you know, like mushrooms or treetops. And again, for a two-year-old or, you know, even an 18-month-old, it's just something for them to climb up, works on their, you know, fly motor skills, and kind of is a bit more family welcoming. This picture right here might be better in your packets if you have it. This is eight-seater post with a net, so it's kind of like a spiral. Again, just something where the kids can climb on, make it a little more entertaining. Some of the biggest challenges with, you know, getting families to the parks and getting the younger kids involved with, you know, the environment and the climate is getting them to the parks. How do you make a park or a trail system, you know, appealing to a five-year-old? Well, you say, hey, we're going to go and climb on, you know, these fun pieces of equipment, and then, hey, we're going to go for a 10-minute walk after. That's half the battle is getting the families out of these parks. It's going to be a hard sell if you tell a five-year-old, hey, we're just going to go for a mile-long hike. So we just need to think of things to do to get the families out. Again, just some more examples, just a much larger version of a climbing log. You have, you know, live edge or cedar benches. You have, you know, cedar chairs. Again, it's just dumps that are clipped into the shape of the chair. And, you know, before you know it, you have a small, you know, gathering area for a handful of kids. They have some signs here that we can use. Again, we want to make it look aesthetically pleasing, make it look like it belongs in the woods with the rest of the scenery. This is the last example. Again, all cedar-made products. This is a small tunnel that the kids can climb through. This is, I think, what they call like a kitchen, you know, it's just, you know, a cedar structure with two little sinks in it. There's no running water, but it's just something that the kids can, actually, I think they call it the monkey kitchen. So, you know, the kids throw some dirt in the pan, and then they mix it all together, and they get their hands dirty. Am I going to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. This is just a pedestrian counter. So this would be very beneficial for us to use for future grants or, you know, just reporting of any sorts. You know, this is like a pedestrian bridge right here. So anytime a pedestrian, you know, walks by this pedestrian counter, just kind of keeps track of, you know, users. So kind of what Kevin was talking about, all these features that we're talking about, you're not going to find them, you know, two miles in a trail. You're going to find them closer to the beginning of the parking lot or to the beginning of the trail. This is kind of an idea of what you would be greeted by. So, you know, in the background here is the parking lot, and you're greeted with a nice small pavilion shelter. And then you have your stone dust or gravel, and then it looks like they have, this is probably the pedestrian bridge where the pedestrian counter was. And then from that point on, it's probably going to be just your regular dirt trail. But usually, you know, probably in the first 20 acres that we talked about where the parking lot is, that's where you're going to find these, these features. You're not going to find them deep in the woods. We've considered the idea of, you know, having permanent restrooms there. Again, we want it to look aesthetically pleasing. We want it to look like it belongs there. So it would be something small with just a single-use restroom for men and women. And, you know, nothing larger than that's probably, you know, 10 by 10 or 10 by 15. So that's something we can also consider having there. Pollinator flowers or, you know, native plants. That's something that we're really focusing on is reintroducing native plants, native species. I am also, you know, flowers that, you know, welcome, you know, your pollinators, your bees and birds and all of that stuff.
It's also educational.
Exactly, yes, educational as well. Another idea that we've been considering is disc golf. So it's one of the fastest-growing sports in the country, but also it's, it's a great way, again, how do we get the people out to the parks? How do we get them using the trails? Disc golf, like I said, it's one of the fastest-growing sports. It's something a little bit different than just going on your nature hike, and it's not very impactful on the leg. So it could be anything from a nine-hole disc golf course up to your 18-hole disc golf course. And, you know, for those of you who aren't necessarily familiar with disc golf, it's simply a combination of golf and frisbee or ultimate frisbee. Essentially, you have these metal baskets. These are your poles. You can have, like I said, 18 of them, nine of them, just like a regular golf course. And then you have your, you know, your tees. And that, you know, a person who's, you know, pretty good at this can throw a frisbee 50 or, you know, 75 yards. And just like golf, you're trying to get to the basket in the quickest way possible. So again, all that is needed for a disc golf course, you know, depending on the extensiveness, I guess, all you need is a basket and, you know, a nice tee spot, which is probably, you know, five feet by 10. So yeah, so here's an example of it. This is your, your tee. And then, let's see. So these are the signs. This kind of gives you an idea, again, just like a regular golf course, gives you an idea of where the basket is. So this is 285 feet away. It's par four. And you can see, other than the tee, you don't see anything, you don't even see the basket from here. It's probably tucked in the woods. The idea is that you, you don't necessarily alter the terrain or the wood that's currently there. You don't need to clear-cut anything. Part of disc golf is working with your surroundings. So you want those natural obstacles. So I think this is something that we could certainly consider, you know, putting into the park as another amenity or attraction to get people to use it. Another activity that we've considered is mountain biking. Again, we have a good parcel of land here. So something that's relatively, you know, something that has little impact is mountain biking. It's a, it's a popular activity in our region. There's, let's see, is it, yep, there is a local group called New England Mountain Bike Association, and there is a quiet corner chapter, so northeastern Connecticut chapter. So there are already established users, people that, again, would come in, use our parks. And then from a very small aspect, you could say that it's also an economic driver. You know, people that, you know, disc golf and mountain bike together, most of the time you're not doing it alone, you're doing it with two or three other people. So it's another way to support our local businesses and restaurants because often how would you go, you know, to the restaurant after? So just another different idea, activity that we can do. Another great thing about New England Mountain Bike Association is they, they have several grants that go towards trail maintenance, building trails, and also they're, they would be considered a, you know, friend group where, you know, they could come out if we had mountain bike trails. They're very active in the community. They would come out, they would help maintain these trails, they would advocate for these trails, they would be a good partner to have for the community. And then kind of a long-term goal that we have for this property and maybe for the entire community is establishing a friend group. Those of you who aren't necessarily familiar with what a friend group is, it's simply a group of local citizens, community members that are, you know, passionate, interested in, you know, maintaining, advocating, and, you know, helping our local parks. So this is just three examples. Some of you might be familiar with Friends of Patchon Cores. They are a phenomenal group. I personally live in Ballantown, mostly Patchon Forest. They are very active in the community. They're a strong advocate. They're a new group that actually came about because of when the state of Connecticut was proposing the gun range and Patchon Forest. That's how they came about. They advocated against it, and they ended up winning. So that's kind of the power that a friend group might have. You know, Friends of Parkness. And then another example is Friends of American Legion and People's Forest. That's out in eastern Connecticut. But all of these groups, the common thing that they have is that they, they work together to advocate for these properties. They organize activities for Friends of Patchon Cores. They organize activities that get the community outwitted to these parks, these properties. They do like a midnight kayak paddle. They do, you know, guided hikes. They do star watches. They do all of these great things. I'm not saying that's necessarily what our friend group would do. It's just some of the, you know, benefits to having a organized group. So this is something that we might want to work towards in the future to ensure that whatever we do on this property, you know, stays in good shape and remains, you know, a property that the town is proud of. This is just an example of a kiosk or sign over at Lisbon Meadows. You can see it's their trail map, and then they have, you know, a list of their, their ball fields and their trails and disc golf course. And this is just another example of a pedestrian bridge crossing a small brooker street.
And so you know that when I wrote off the list initially of what, when I wrote off that list initially of the different items that were proposed, we need to go out and take pictures and give examples of every single one. Really what I'd like to be able to do is work with the community to let them go through that as well and try to figure out what they'd like to have there. Not everything is going to work, obviously. There is one that I think that was messed up there that we talked about initially, that was the horse riding trail. And there's definitely another group that would help to work to maintain the grounds for that as well, so we can reach out to them. The good thing about a lot of these things is once we utilize groups, activities, and ideas, and put something together, just come back to the town to go forward. A lot of the upfront costs are really talking about the, what are you going to put into it for ideas, how do you engineer properly so you have, you don't have a horse group crossing trails with a mountain biking group, and then so on and so forth. You want to be safe for everybody, but everybody have an access, an access point. We do, like I said in the beginning, we had a certain amount of money that was available for open space, which is what this is. We had initially around $420,000. We spent $103,000. That means that there's still $317,000 in there for whether it be tree thinning for the trails itself, for any of the items we might purchase. But there's also something else, and that's why I had our grant writer here to add on to that. Not only is this a, an opportunity to go out and ask for more grants, but it gives us an opportunity to understand what the whole picture is, not just now, this year, but also five or 10 years from now. And I'm talking about a Connecticut recreational trails program grant, and we're looking to apply for that as well. So what we need to do is actually put together our collective heads to think about what is something that is going to be feasible money-wise, what is feasible for not only now but also for the future, and put those, that information out there through this group to come back to the town afterwards. In the meantime, we'll be working on searching for more grants like this to come forward. This is definitely a low maintenance. If you figure out that if this is all done, and it's the items that you want to have up there, then really it's just trail maintenance for the most part. It is something that you could definitely use, as you said, to, to benefit the offset businesses because when people come in in groups, they're going to look to go to places to utilize our shopping or, you know, for small items and then, or go out to eat. There's also an opportunity to do more things later on. We'd like to be able to plan a problem. I do have a few people's names on, names on the list over there. If anybody's interested in joining in afterwards, you can do so, you can see us, and we'll talk about that. But now I want to really turn over the floor to the public and let them have their input. If there's ideas, if there's concerns, if there's where do we go next, how do I sign up, anything like that, the floor is now yours. You can kind of microphone, speak, and just state your names so we can keep it record and vote for it from there. Is anybody wishing to speak at this point? Well, I should tell you one more thing. I'm sorry, we're also going to piggyback up because when I saw you get up, I thought this is a great opportunity to say that there was something done previously with a survey. So we'd like to be able to put a survey out there to the public to get their input. Because right now, we're talking about 16, 17 people in our room, and it's not a real great representation. Not bad, but it's not, it's not a real Not bad, but it's not, it's not a real great representation of the town. So, we want to put the survey out there and ask for more public input and more ideas. So, that's how we're going to be doing that. We're putting, you and Mary Ann and myself, we're putting together the survey as we speak. When I went to Survey Monkey, we'll put it up on the town website as well and also print some copies. Sorry, Walter.
Walter Sweeney, Chairman of the Plainfield Conservation Commission. Welcome all these ideas, and we finally got to this point. And it's been a long road, many years, and happy to see it happen. I have a couple, I have a couple of concerns. Kevin, what's going to be the governing policy for this whole area? Is it going to be the town's open space policy? Is it going to be the DOT's open space policy? Or is it going to be the DEEP's open space policy? Or is it going to be a combination of all three?
Good question. We already have a town policy, so we're following that. We'll keep on updating as we go, but I think this is what we, a starting point.
Okay. And that's going to cover the 139 acres, too?
139 acres, yes.
That town policy?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, I think this, once we get to a certain stage, this whole area should get a name, right? Definitely needs some kind of a name.
Sure.
So, I don't know if anybody has any ideas for a name. I had, I had an idea. Since the Riley family and the Hall family made this available to us, I thought maybe Riley Hall Preserve. I'm just throwing it out there.
Fairly.
Then, as far as all these activities, so, yes, it's all well and good, but I'm seeing like, it's a combination of two areas instead of one big area. You're going to have a big recreational space up front, correct?
I wouldn't say big, but I would say that the first four acres, the property that Mr. Hall sold, is great for parking.
Right.
And then, if you look, there is that 18.57, which does have some wetlands on it, so it does restrict what you can put on there. And that would be more of the idea of recreation, and that's something we're already tearing down as we speak. The initial thought, if you looked at the last list of things, you know, sand volleyball, ice skating, horse show pits, things like that, there, there, there's something that we spoke about on the phone, we talked about how we want to be harmonious with what you're doing. The main intent here was utilizing the open space. The walking trails, the hiking trails, nature trails, horse trails, things like that are usually quiet things. But to put up a ball field on it would probably not be helpful at all. So, that's why we, like you said, tonight, we already stripped down some of those things. We'd like to continue that process.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my concern, too.
If I could, I, we could probably fit just about, you know, we talked about the restroom, and we would only maybe include a couple of those activities of the, you know, independent play structures. I see no reason why we couldn't fit that in, you know, like, one acre. It would be near the parking lot, near the restroom. It would all be in one area. It wouldn't be, you know, spread the crowd.
Okay. Yeah, my concern was about disturbing the wildlife with, you know, a lot of activities. And if you have that going on up front, could be a possibility, maybe. And also, are all the neighbors okay with having something at that scale behind the houses, you know, this recreational area that you guys are proposing?
That's actually the rest of the, that's actually the rest of the Riley and Patel family.
Okay.
So, they were okay with what we were doing. We still want to present to them as well.
Okay.
Because they are part of it.
I think that's all I got for now.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate this. This is all the beginning stages. There's a lot of work to be done yet to putting this all together. So, we're already working on it. We appreciate all the input.
Stu Hall, a member of the Conservation Commission also. I think before you plan anything, that you would get a geologist involved to see what is in the space. Our ranger that comes out and talks about the different types of trees. We had a walk in the Plainfield Forest Area this weekend for October, and it was amazing the structures up there, the rock formations. So, I would think you would have to be planning activities. Before you plan them, you have to know where are the rock formations, what types of trees you have, what you might want to preserve. Like, we are working on the chestnut trees in that area that we're trying to preserve. You might find that out there, too. So, I'm planning on hiring someone to come in from either the DEEP. They did that for our 90-acre forest management area, and it was very interesting. Also, we know the soil content. So, when you're planting the bridges and the wetlands, and is there any water out there? Are there ponds out there?
There is a stream. If you take a look at the picture on the side over here, I can point out where there's actually a stream. And there is some wetland at the beginning portion of it, but that is pretty much where the water sources are at this point. There is no real pond per se. We do intend, intend on asking Bill Morgan to come out, or his group to come out, to walk the, walk the trail, walk the area, because it's not a trail. Walk the area with us to see what issues he might have, the DEEP may have, and also some of the highlights that he may be able to bring up to us as well.
Right. But I'd also mention the stone walls, that there must be stone walls out there, too, to preserve. So, before you say, well, we're going to do this here and not there, I think you have to know all that information before you start planning.
I, I'll just add that the grant that Kevin briefly mentioned, a large focus for our, hopefully, will be application for that grant is conducted in impact stuff. So, that's, that's exactly what we're hoping to do. That would be our first step. Just like you said, figuring out what's out there for, you know, species and, you know, is there anything, or, you know, the water sources, the stone walls, all of that stuff. So, yes, absolutely. That's, that's our hope is through this grant, we can do more of those stuff.
James Valdez purchased the property right across the street about a moment and a half ago. Just trying to jump in. Trying to understand where the vision for this parking lot is. Is it in the structure at campground over there? Is that where you envision, where are you envisioning this property that you purchased? Across the street from my home. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Sure. Since I don't know exactly where your home is, I might be more than willing to sit down and show you our.
Sure. It's, it's directly across the street.
Yeah. Bear with me one second.
What that sign you showed in your presentation, the land sign?
I'll take a look.
Please.
It's tough to tell with this map, but you know roughly knows. And so, it's pretty much highway. That's the highway. It's directly across the street.
Is your vision to put the?
Yeah.
So, my wife and I live in Plainfield. Fell in love with this home because of the quiet and security of the area. What would be, and I'm all for passive recreation. I love the idea of, you know, yeah, my house is right across the street. But what would be the town's idea of the security in that area? When you build passive recreation pavilions, is that you're going to have teenagers, you're going to have, you know, folks coming to that land, not using your parks. It's designed, and that would, across the street, decrease my sense of security in my home. So, I just wanted to see what the town plan would be for that.
We're looking for hours of operation. So, we'd have to be able to close it off, and it would be gated. And of course, the recreation department, at that point, is running it. So, they're, they're the ones looking for it. And we look to secure the areas so we wouldn't have anybody coming in. I think we'd also be talking about later on, looking about additional camera systems to help out, to make sure that it's safe.
And it's actually worth noting, kind of in the recreation field, one of the best ways, best forms of security is to increase activity through, you know, your friendly users. So, that's something that we would try and encourage, is, you know, getting the families, you know, because someone that's going to break the law or, you know, cause mischief isn't going to do it right in front of a family. So, it, we, the hope is that we would encourage friendly users, the right kind of people that we want using that property, and hopefully, that would decrease any likelihood of.
Yeah, like I said, the security there, there's the ability to try to gate, not let people in. That'll be the only vision I would have of kind of my, security of my area. But that's our vision. It's out my head. I agree with the folks at the Conservation Commission. Just want to make sure that the areas are safely. But I'm all for kind of what folks want to do. And again, it's a nice opportunity across the street from my house, but just security would be the one thing I'd want to keep in mind. That's why I moved it down. So, appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Anna Paulson, and I'm an alternate on the Conservation Commission. So, my main question, here's my question. My main question was, item 10 on the Town Plainfield Open Space Policy says, "No person or organization shall erect tents or construct shelters or other structures of a temporary permanent nature or own any sponsored gathering or function in any town, open space area." I guess, in a strict reading of that, that seems like permanent structures would seem to be following some of the plans that you guys are describing. I'm wondering if you're going to change that, or if there's a reading of that that seems to get around that idea of not having permanent structures or shelters such as. And I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but I'm also sharing the concerns of the other conservation that there's about too much noise for the animals that are there, permanently scaring away. If there's too high a level of activity and sound going, even at the beginning when you have construction, it can be a problem. So, I was curious about that.
I think those are things that we talked about with, the first question that came from Walter was basically the idea of which open space we can utilize. At this point, it's the town's, and I can mention at that time, we're willing to make some modification based on some of the things we have in front of us. So, I think that's still a work in progress that we can talk about. Some of the things I think, though, you talk about the structures, can you go back here? So, like, an open structure like that is something where you're utilizing for multiple purposes in my mind. You're utilizing it for, here's where your trails are with the trail guide, or each of the individual things you're using it for. It's also an area for, a quick area for shelter from the, from the elements if you're trying to get out of the rain really quick. But basically, it's, it's something we can still consider whether we do it or not. So, it's still something, a work in progress for that. And then, of course, I think there was also a concern of putting up a restroom. Some of the things that if you go to a facility like, whether it might be disc golf or horse trails, or any trail for that matter, is be able to come out and know the family. You're looking for someplace that you might be able to wash up and utilize it for the restroom. So, again, it's a work in progress idea, but it's something that we'd have to talk about in the future.
I actually, I love this idea in theory, I really do. But I have a lot of concerns. The first concern is, this is a conservation thing. I have, I've grown up in Plainfield. I loved walking in the woods in Lucip Sterling. I mean, that, that is a nice trail, the rail to trails thing they have there. And one of the things I disliked immensely was way back when we paved it. You know, because it's, it's a good workout. I mean, actually, you know, you have to walk around with dirt, rocks, all that stuff. So, once we start going, let's, let's pave things, let's, let's put up buildings. We're, we're really starting to, I think, run afoul of the town's open space policy, and I can't reconcile that. One issue that I do have with this is, you know, the town is going to have to ensure it. We're going to have to, you know, change the policy. We're going to have to ensure this property in case anything happens. Obviously, you start building structures, things, things will happen. You will have vandalism, you will have to clean bathrooms, you will have to take out trash. Obviously, we will have to put up a gate. We will run into, you know, some sort of ADA issue if we start really just building this thing out. And one thing that I think if we're going to continue with this, we should probably just go ahead and say, look, we're not going to change anything. We're going to leave it exactly as God made it. It is a nature preserve. That is, that is a stellar awesome purpose. I'm all for that. But we are going to post signs that say, you enter at your own risk. You assume all risk if you come in. But I think otherwise, the concerns I have go to the general theory of, look, we have the match for grant money, and just fill out this guy. And unfortunately, in this town, we do have a habit of saying, we've got a grant for, say, for example, pick a random sidewalk that just appears, you know? So, years later, what happens is, well, we built the sidewalk, we feel good about it. A, we spent money to get the grant, but B, the sidewalk's there, you know? Or, or the park's there, whatever the thing that is there. Now, we've got to make payment. Now, it breaks down, and the sidewalk, just like this park, now it will affect adjacent property owners who, they didn't necessarily get asked politely if they wanted to shovel a sidewalk or say have something to do with a, with a park that's being built out. So, I mean, the idea of a nature preserve, awesome. I mean, it is altruistic. It's great for, you know, bird watching. I'm not sure geocaching would be acceptable with the open space policy, but there's a lot, you could, you could put a beehive out there. I mean, you could put different flowers out there. That would be low cost. But at the end of the day, this just seems like we should just leave it alone, you know, as it is, and just post up the signs that say, you enter at your own risk. Otherwise, we're just going to end up in this never-ending quest that one grant feeds into another grant, feeds into another grant, then we've got to hire somebody, then we've got to clean that up. And it's just this never-ending project that continues to expand and expand and expand. And like many things in this town, we have, you know, buildings we don't take care of. You've probably no doubt, I know you're, you're new to the town, but you've heard about the annex, you've heard about the elementary school. We've got some big things that, I mean, they're on the list of deferred maintenance. So, I, I love the idea of recreation, I love the idea of preserving nature, because I, I love this town, it's beautiful. That's one of the best things that I was going for it. But, yeah, you know, we start building it out like that, we're going to, we're going to add more to the pile, so that's the number one concern. Thank you.
Just as a response to one of the comments being made, I don't remember anywhere in here where we said we're paving anything. So, we're trying to keep it to that natural beauty of what we have.
I'm saying that preemptively because my experience is, being a nature guy, originally, things are intact, but somebody goes, oh, let's, let's put pavement here. That, that does happen down the road.
I, I will say that I think the goal here is, just like you said, to have a long-term vision so that whatever we put there doesn't become a burden on the town. So, that's why whatever we do choose to put there will be low cost, low maintenance, low impact. And like I said, we don't have to necessarily go with that company. I'm sure there's a lot of skilled, crafty people in town or in the region that could probably replicate 90% of those products. So, maybe we consider going with that friends group, that volunteer group, where, you know, if a stump, you know, I showed the chairs, you know, the stump chairs, you know, that's something pretty basic where someone can replicate. So, whatever we go with, hopefully, it's, it's low maintenance, low, you know, low impact.
Good way God made it to sort of the policy.
Jenny Kersakovich. I just want to say I openly celebrate this concept. As someone who is dedicated and committed to the town, I think it's a wonderful opportunity that we can give back to our community and give other people an opportunity to explore nature. Obviously, I'm a large parcel owner. You know, whenever asks me permission to come onto my property, so I welcome the idea that we can give people this place to go. I also think it discourages negative acts. You know, we give organized activities a place to go, it allows our youth to have something that is purposeful. We don't offer a lot in our community that gives our youth, you know, kind of an organized activity that keeps them out of trouble, so to speak. So, I definitely hear what you're saying about, you know, certainly I want to minimize, you know, vandalism, crime, surrounding environment, but I want to. But I wanted to ask a question to you, Kevin. You had alluded to perhaps maybe deed or sale restrictions on the initial parcel because you had said something about needing to get approval or run it by the former owners. So I was just wondering what those restrictions might be.
Well, we wanted to actually be able to put the committee together to put plans in order to go to the neighbors and say, "This is what we'd like to do." So it's tough to do that in the front end when you don't even have an idea of different things you'd like to have on the property. So that's why I would like to put this into play, have ideas, bring to the table, and then finally get to the point where we can go to the neighbors and say, "This is what is planned, and are there issues at that point?" So that gives everybody input into the project itself.
Super. And I wanted to elaborate. So the park that I have happened to frequent, none of it was purchased from a catalog. It was all designed by individuals, and it was meant to be integrated within the environment. So there are really wonderful ways to have that happen where you don't have to, A, invest money into something that's out of the catalog that costs fortune. And then B, it allows you to tap the natural environment and what the landscape is allowing. So I, again, I celebrate that the town is finally getting to this place where we can offer something to other people.
Thank you. And we do appreciate the fact you were able to give us those photos. And I think what was trying, we were trying to do the next step of the photos with some ideas and to bring that together, whether it be all natural or not, that's fine. It's tough to put ideas on a slideshow without having something else to go with. So we definitely appreciate the input for that.
Sean Peterson. I do like the trail idea. You know, I typically walk the line of light. I think that'd be great for our community. I think the playground stuff, we've got to keep it more coming with the environment. More looks like, let it belong there, not store it. I like the idea on there that had like, you know, a little childish area with a stage and a bunch of schools. That'd be great for like the boys' house, the girls' scouts. If the schools are doing a field trip, the walking environment, they could have a little fashion area that they could do with the classes. I like that idea. The bathrooms, maybe we just want to get rentals, portals. Instead of put full-size, a big expensive structure there with a set of the system of water and well. Just almost like, more sense.
I deal with the rental. I appreciate the idea with the rental sometimes though, is it seasonal? Yeah, and then you have to take some things out, so... You know, I think for my goal, I'd love to see something that would eventually could be permanent, but again, it looks more like it fits into the area. But for now, I'm sure that we have to go with this as a seasonal rental.
They do make nice, you could put a concrete pad and put rentals on top of that so it looks nice. And I think you can use them year-round. You just don't have a fresh one to wash your hands with.
Do we have a small company in our town that makes...
Would they be able to use power for just a minute?
I'd have to check with them on how they would be able to adapt something into this type of environment.
It's still a port body. Their fancy ones happen to have water.
I would just, I would just want a fairly local portal company that's very good and responsive.
$180 you want from a local business to rent a port body with monthly service? So occasionally there is, it's $180.
And what would that accept your costs?
Cool.
There are other options, but other than, there's, you know, natural compost, you know, all of that stuff. But probably the local, you know, would be good.
Other comments, other ideas?
Good. Not the passive recreation.
What's your name?
Oh, Dan Real. Dan Real.
Dan Real.
I agree with a lot of things you said on Conservation Commission point of view. This is passive recreation open space, correct? It's going to be a passive recreation open space.
Excuse me, we can't hear you back here because of the microphone.
It's going to be a passive recreation open space, I'm sorry. So, that being said, I just want to read what the D E P defines passive recreation. Just for everybody's sake. What is passive recreation? Passive recreation refers to recreational activities that do not require intensive development and prepared facilities like sports fields or buildings. Passive recreation activities place minimal stress on site's resources and as a result provide ecosystem service benefits and are highly compatible natural resource protection. And then it goes to say, "Passive recreation does not significantly impact natural, cultural, scenic, or agricultural values. Requires only minimal visitor facilities and services directly related to safety and minimizes human impacts." Here's some examples of natural resource-based passive recreational activities. Hiking, wildlife viewing, painting, photography, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, fishing, canoeing. They even say hunting, but I don't think we want hunting, but they say it. Environmental education and pique taking, that's pretty much it. I mean, all these other sports activities, I think they'd belong in sports fields, not in this area. That's my take on it.
Adrian Paulson, again, Conservation Commission. I had two positive ideas while David was talking. Maybe you can say to have some kind of partnership with the educational institutions in the area to do field trips. I remember going to Lincoln Park as a group in Norwich to observe a lot of the natural ecological processes. They actually have a program there. Something like that would be really awesome for our students, our children. That's one idea. Another idea is possibly, depending on what the results are from the geological survey, if there's a lot of wildlife activity, the Auden Society may be interested in working with us in some ways.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Adrian. Yeah, those were some of the items that were spoken about last time, and we're definitely interested in those. I think if, on the list, the initial list that was there, they talk about a bird pond, small bird pond for observation. And there's also the educational idea, because we wanted to get the outdoor educational opportunities and partner with the school systems, because that does start the whole process out of them looking and learning about nature. So I think that was another mention from last time as well. Anybody else?
Sean Dan Real. Again, I had a thought experiment based on all of this lovely formative comment and observations and suggestions. Maybe as an experiment, what we can do is leave it as is, but, you know, say, put up some of those like deer cameras on the trails and say, "So nature preserve, walk around and see what people like to do." And do that for about a month, you know, say in the spring, and go, "Oh, well, we know it fits." Because I know one of the problems we typically have, unfortunately, have as a town is we like to go, "Oh, this thing, I want it to be a blank," and we get fixated on it. But what we don't do nearly enough, and I think we can do and correct here, is just observe like, what does the environment support? What is it conducive to, like, what do people like? And, you know, I've been on trails all my life. I mean, it's great exercising. One of the things I've always observed is like, people will typically walk their dog. I mean, it's just kind of a, or a portal fish. I mean, but, you know, if you put a trail cam up, you'll find out what people are actually going to do if we just let them go do it, and we let them kind of breathe it in, you know, kick the tires, we can get a better handle on it. So it's a thought experiment. Plant the seeds, it may take root, but I think it'd be interesting.
I just wanted to say, one of his ideas. Again, wild, you know, from the other across the street. I think animals more than children might be a nicer idea for the town. One of the things I have noticed in town in my brief time as a wild place to walk, or a nice, might be a nice place to walk and bring the ducks. You know, I think people tend to break things, make a mess, maintenance, all that great stuff. I would just want the idea of a dog park or something, you know, more related to where the horses, I'm not sure how many horses are in town, but that might be a nice idea as well. That's just my...
Anyone else? So there was a start of the last meeting, is again, informational meeting. There was a start of the last informational meeting for people who would be interested in joining up and start talking about all of these things. Move to the next step, which is working with the survey, Survey Monkey, to put it out there as to what the rest of the public is looking like. Looking to put up there what they'd like to have there. So we'd like to continue that process, and I will say that we'll put something out in the next week or so. And it'll be available on Survey Monkey, also the town website, access that. And also art copies here. We appreciate the input. We know that there's things that definitely aren't going to be workable there. We know there's a lot of things that are. We'd like to be able to move these ideas forward and have another meeting on this just to say, "This is what we've gotten so far." And then bring it to, again, more level of that evolution going forward. So do appreciate all of your input. I know that if we do have another meeting, I'd love to have some more people come out. But definitely would be, looking on the survey, wanting to see what your ideas are as well. Would be probably about four, maybe five questions. And then go from there with an open statement. So if you're looking for something in particular that isn't on the Survey Monkey, we'd definitely welcome your input for that. So unless there's anything else that someone wants to add in?
Yeah, Sean Peterson. When, you mentioned you were writing some, with the D E P and different officials, so look at this. When is that going to happen? Should that happen before you go into the planning decisions?
Well, we already, actually, Kyle Collins was going to go out and walk the whole process, the whole area and take video. But I'm also going to invite, like I said, the D E P gentleman that's just been helping us out so far, invite him to come as well, because I'm sure he'd like to take a look at the whole area.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have an idea before you can go through the process of picking what you might want there. What actually could go there? They might say, "Let me think about it."
Is this property in the survey yet completely? With all the three properties together, and is it in boundary?
It's in the works. The survey is being done as we speak.
And there's going to be Marcus Place on the perimeter all the way around.
Yep.
That's about it?
I do appreciate the fact you came out tonight, and we shared some ideas and some thoughts and concerns. We will definitely try to get a committee together to see if we can go forward with the next steps. And I do, again, want to say that we will be coming forward with the Survey Monkey soon. And then also maybe a follow-up meeting with the group that signed up already. If they didn't know they signed up already, the name's over there. But thank you very much for coming out tonight, and have a safe trip home. Thank you.